Good afternoon. Thank you to the two people who responded. Good afternoon? Thank you, that's so much better, thank you so much. We are very, very excited to welcome you today to our fourth quarterly special recognition ceremony. I would like to start this afternoon off, we're going to thank a lot of people and recognize a lot of people, but Matt Addison and Kristen from our office that put this all together, let's just give them a round of applause. There's a lot of work that goes into organizing this, putting all of these recognitions together, writing them, and just the time and talent that they have to do this, I want them to be recognized. So again, thank you. This is very fun for all of us because we have an opportunity to spend a few moments with people in our community and have everyone together in this room to recognize so many talented individuals in our community and wonderful people that give their time and their talent to our community. So thank you all for being here today. So how this will go, if you haven't been here before, is we will start with community recognitions. And I will begin with our first couple and then we will read, call you up and read some information for everyone else to hear about you and then we will hand you your recognition, ask you to stand there and smile pretty for a photograph. If once yours is done, if you would like to leave or if you have other things to do, you're welcome to leave at that point. But we will recognize community recognitions and then we will move to our board appointments. And we will recognize those members of our community that have chosen to give their time to these boards and to give their time to our community and we will recognize those board appointments. And then we will follow that up and end that with employee recognitions. And so we'll start with community, then we'll move to board appointments and then employment recognitions, employee recognitions. We don't anticipate this taking more than an hour. We hope to move through these, but we also don't want to speed anybody along too much so you get the time and the applause that you so richly deserve. So with that, I will start this off with our first community recognition and I would ask Scott and Amy Ferris to come up. How about that? That's right. Ms. Patterson Harris says she's rocking that jumpsuit. As my teenagers' daughters would say, "That's a nice fit." Scott and Amy Ferris are leaders and pioneers in the Lubbock music scene. As an artist and the creative director behind Ferris Wheel Productions, Scott has produced albums and created album art for many talented musicians and he has earned the respect and admiration from many people in the music industry. Amy is a lifelong songwriter, vocalist and musician and has played keys on numerous notable albums. She currently teaches at the Texas Tech School of Music. So it is appropriate today to recognize Scott and Amy Ferris and their business, Ferris Wheel Productions, for receiving the Record Producer of the Year nomination by the Texas Regional Radio Music Awards. This nomination is a testament to their exemplary work in art and music at Ferris Wheel Productions and we are so very proud of them. It is my honor to present this special proclamation to Scott and Amy Ferris.
Thank you everybody for being here, we're so proud of our citizens and as you can see, you're proud of each other too. So the next honor that we have is a very significant recognition and it is going to the Diocese of Lubbock. And for 40 years since its founding in 1983, the Catholic Diocese of Lubbock has remained a pillar of faith and spiritual growth in the community. By providing a sanctuary for worship, education and fellowship through the gospel, the shepherds of the Diocese of Lubbock have guided and nurtured the spiritual well-being of the citizens of Lubbock. And if I can have them to come up here, please? It is fitting to recognize the Catholic Diocese of Lubbock for all the church has done and will continue to do for the community it serves. It is my honor to present this special proclamation and it reads in Lubbock and encourage the Catholic Diocese of Lubbock in Lubbock and encourage all citizens to congratulate them on their 40 years of service. Thank them for embodying the Lord's teachings of compassion, love and service to others and wish, we wish them many more successful years of growing in Christ worship. And this is dated the 20th day of June 2023 on behalf of the mayor, myself and the rest of the city council. Congratulations.
It's my honor to honor Fourth on Broadway. And I think everybody knows what that is and how important that's become to our community. For 33 years, Fourth on Broadway has been celebrated annually here in Lubbock. And it's, this year is inviting all Lubbock and West Texas residents to celebrate our nation's independence and our unity and our community with the theme "United We Sing." This year's festivities will begin on July 4th appropriately at 9:45 a.m. It will feature a parade, children's activities, great food and evening fireworks display at McKenzie Park. And it's fitting to recognize Broadway Festivals Incorporated and the many local business sponsors and hundreds of volunteers who dedicate their time to make this event possible every year. So it's my honor to present this special proclamation. 33rd Annual Fourth on Broadway Celebration in Lubbock and encourage all citizens to attend and support this year's Fourth on Broadway Celebration to commemorate America's birthday together as a community, to thank the volunteers and sponsors for once again hosting such a fun event and to wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July, dated today, signed by the mayor and the city council. So would y'all come forward, who's going to receive this? And we also have a performance. Let them all get forward, there's a bunch up here. There are a bunch of you. Can you get us all in? Yeah, just squeeze in here. Let's practice that unity and community, come on, come on. Do it on over. Or scooch. And we have Lexi and Presley Evans who are going to perform for us, so take it away, girl.
At this time, we will recognize Foster Alive and Dr. Sean Keel, are you here? There she is. Carl Keel. Cindy Carver. Kate McKee. Faye Siegel. And Connie Sim. Come on up, everybody. Foster Alive was founded in 2004 by Dr. Sean Keel, a dedicated psychologist with decades of experience and passion working with foster children. And I've known her for a good long while because we crossed paths in the legal system at times because we all need help sometimes when we have personal crisis. This organization provides essential resources, guidance and support to foster families and children and has numerous programs in place so that these children have every opportunity in the world to succeed. It's appropriate to recognize Foster Alive for serving as a vital bridge between the foster care system and the local community, facilitating collaborations, raising awareness and implementing programs that address the unique needs of foster children and their families. Foster Alive in Lubbock, we are asking you to recognize them and ask all residents to join us thanking this organization for its invaluable contributions and dedications towards the betterment of foster children and the foster care system in our community. Thank you so much for all that you do for these kiddos. At this time, if we can have the South Plains Food Bank and receiving, we're going to have Dina Jeffries, the CEO, and Travis Johnson, the board chair. This is another 40-year anniversary and I was telling Dina how the Diocese and the food bank had a connection. But the South Plains Food Bank has been acting as a helping hand for individuals facing food insecurity throughout the South Plains and has reached a milestone anniversary of 40 years of service. They understand that their mission goes beyond providing just a meal. With programs such as the Apple Orchard and other nutritional programs, children in West Texas are being nurtured and given a deeper understanding of food and the body. The South Plains Food Bank feeds over 9 million meals to 20 different counties in West Texas annually and the staff, volunteers and donors, and we've probably all been volunteers and donors, have made positive changes in our neighborhoods and communities and if you haven't, please do so. It is appropriate to congratulate the South Plains Food Bank for four decades of volunteerism and for consistency, providing hope and opportunities for those who are experiencing food insecurity. It is my very great honor to present this special proclamation to the South Plains Food Bank of Lubbock and I ask all of you to recognize them and cherish them. And we appreciate you and with that, I am going to do this special award.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to recognize this afternoon the Stormwater Art Project and those receiving this recognition today, if you would go and come up. I've got Kaysha, Ynki, Abby and Lindley. Come on, come on down. I got it, I'm on it. Come on, stand right here, we're all, just gather in. You can even help me re- Each year, the City of Lubbock Stormwater Compliance Department in conjunction with Civic Lubbock, Inc. holds a public art competition to educate citizens on the connection between storm drains and local waterways. Artists are encouraged to display their creativity by personifying the year's selected theme and incorporating the messages of pollution prevention and the protection of our local natural waterways. This year's theme was "Water, Where Art Thou?" It is fitting to recognize Kaysha, Ynki and Abby, this year's selected artists, for their outstanding work in beautifying our downtown area and for offering a simple and artistic reminder that is important to keep our water and storm drains clean from trash and litter, including grass clippings by the way. If you have any time, be sure to check out their freshly painted pieces around Buddy Holly Hall. It is my distinct honor to present each of them with this special proclamation and then Lindley's going to help out a little bit too.
Yes, we're missing Kaysha, so we-
Oh, we are, okay.
We will celebrate her.
So I've got Ynki, there they go, congratulations.
At this time, I would ask for Dr. Nancy Trevino and Steve Warren to come forward. Here they are. You know, the recognitions are great, but the other thing that happens at these recognitions is we find out what people around the city do that we may not know anything about. So, they are here today for the West Texas Mental Health Collaborative and you may say, "Well, what in the world is that?" It is an organization of the City of Lubbock, County of Lubbock, University Medical Center, Covenant Health, Texas Tech University and Texas Tech Health Sciences Center. These two people have been wrestling with six entities who have plenty of ego for all of us. They were pulled in as what we call facilitators to help all six of us work on the mental health situation in Lubbock. And mental health doesn't just include what some of you would think of as mental health, but also our issues with homelessness and substance abuse in this city. And one of the projects that has come out of the West Texas Mental Health Collaborative is the Diversion Center that is to be built out on the Starr Care property. And it is a center where we can bring people who might choose not to go to jail. They may be charged with a misdemeanor, doing something that they shouldn't have done and they're given an option to go to the Diversion Center and to get help. It doesn't always do good to put someone in jail and expect good results. So these two people have really had their hands full. The Diversion Center has been funded with three and a half million dollars from the City of Lubbock ARPA funds and three and a half million dollars of Lubbock County ARPA funds. And we now have a conceptual drawing of what it's going to look like and we hope it to be completed in early 2025. So I felt like at this point, with what they've had to deal with, with all of us in this six-member collaborative that's going to continue to do very good work in our mental health community. So, we, the mayor and city council of the great City of Lubbock, do hereby recognize Steve Warren and Dr. Nancy Trevino and the West Texas Mental Health Collaborative in Lubbock. Encourage all citizens to thank them for all their efforts to address the mental health crisis in Lubbock and West Texas, dated this 20th day of June 2023. Thank you so much for all you've done. They're not finished, they've just gotten through project one, so give them a big hand, they're going to hang. I'd like to ask members of the Hispanic Association of Women, Destiny Chavaria, Andrea Moreno Juarez, Dr. Andrea Moreno Juarez, Alma Moreno, Dr. Marissa Crowley and, is it a doctor also for Miranda? Nope, okay. Yeah, we'll give you a PhD right here. And Sylvia Juarez, she's one of our very own, these are my sisters, y'all. Since 1983, the Hispanic Association of Women has empowered women and youth through outreach, financial support for academic pursuits and providing a positive and affirming space for the Lubbock community. At the 2023 Scholarship Gala, the association raised $120,000 in scholarships for 60 deserving women, adding to the 525 scholarships already awarded through the organization in the past. It is appropriate to recognize the Hispanic Association of Women for their commitment to grow and support our community and their dedication to make Lubbock a better place. And let me just tell you, I was a recipient, once upon a time, a long time ago, of Hispanic Association Women Scholarship, as was my daughter, and look where we are today. So it is my honor to present this very special proclamation to the Hispanic Association of Women. Will you please help me to recognize this great group of women?
Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, they're so sorry. You know, that'd be all right if you were leaning over asking your cousin to borrow $10, but that's not what we're doing here today. What we're doing is we're celebrating that some good folks have done some good stuff, right? So let's act like that. There's nothing like a party for celebrating. Good afternoon, everybody! Ah, that was a little bit better, one more time. Good afternoon, everybody! That part, that's what I'm talking about because if nobody celebrates us, who will? That's what I always say, it's a poor dog who won't wag his own tail. So we're here to wag the tail of this city and share and recognize some good folks. I am here to help recognize Noah, I hope I don't barge this name up, Narbaez, verdad? Bamba ka onda le. Noah Narbaez is an incoming senior at Lubbock High School and he's earned himself numerous trophies and awards and accolades by showcasing his exceptional talent down the bowling lane. You know, Noah recently won the Texas High School Bowling State Title. Yeah, let's hear it for him. You know, this was the first, there's nothing like being the first, Noah, because you paved the way. So he is the first ever athlete from Lubbock High School, from Lubbock High, yes, to accomplish such a goal. Takes a lot of dedication. It says that there is no doubt that his drive, his commitment and character continue to make his late father and and biggest supporter, Joel Apollo Narbe, Narbaez Jr. Proud. It is appropriate at this moment for us, city council, along with these other folks who've joined the party, to appropriate for us to recognize Noah for his determination and commitment to the sport of bowling as well as his leadership and guidance as a role model for his peers, his teammates and future Lubbock High Bowlers to overcome obstacles and pursue their dreams. That's your task, Noah. It is my honor to present this special proclamation to the one and only bowling champion of the state of Texas. That's Mr. Noah Narbaez. And it is signed by the mayor and the rest of these folk that hang together every other Tuesday. So we say congratulations to you and thanks for representing this place, Lubbock, Texas, USA.
Ava Flores. There you are, are your parents here, Ava? Why don't you have them come on up and maybe somebody else will take pictures for you? Come on over here, come on over here. There you go, there you go. Okay. This past school year, as a fifth grader at Rush Elementary, Ava Flores demonstrated aptitude for spelling and earned a well-deserved place among the nation's best at the 2023 National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC. Fifth grader. Ava has exhibited unwavering commitment, tireless effort and a love for spelling throughout her journey. And after winning the regional spelling bee, Ava showcased her remarkable dedication and knowledge at the national level. Winning words in qualifying the spelling bee, bail out. Other words spelled correctly in local competition, piston. Words spelled correctly in DC, Svengali and Apeek. And the misspelled word, I bet there's not three people in this audience? Glotitidate. There's not one, okay. I said three, you and me and Matt Dotree, okay? Anyway, we are very proud of Ava for what she has accomplished and what she did when she was in Washington, representing all of us. So, the mayor, city council, the great City of Lubbock do hereby extend this special recognition to Ava Flores in Lubbock and encourage all citizens to congratulate her on the remarkable achievements at the 2023 National Spelling Bee. To applaud her for her dedication and love for spelling and knowledge and thank her for representing Lubbock, Texas so well on the national stage. So this is dated the 20th day of June 2023 and signed by the mayor and all the members of the city council. And congratulations to parents for raising such a great young lady. We have a few here and I'll bring those out in just a minute. But I would like to ask the staff and the junior ambassadors, and let me just tell you, when I share all this great stuff, you're going to be so proud. But guys, if y'all will come up here, join me in-
me in the center, and they are pros at lining up. And they speak Japanese, too, I'm so proud. And when I tell you that we had the best staff, that, I never worried, because everything was right in its place, but these young students represented us in the country of Japan in our sister city, Musashino City, and, I mean, you guys would be so proud. But the city of Lubbock has maintained a wonderful relationship with our sister city, Musashino City, Japan, for the past thirty years. Through the Junior Ambassador Goodwill Program, this program has allowed numerous Lubbock students, including my daughter, to travel abroad, fostering the development, and Sheila's daughter, they went together actually, traveling and fostering the development of friendship, understanding, and education. These sixteen middle school students and city of Lubbock staff were part of our most recent trip and just got back from Japan earlier this month, and I got to be with them, and let me tell you, they were so wonderful that I even missed them a week later, so. These individuals stayed with host families, met with dignitaries, toured historic locations, and explored Musashino City, and they spent a lot of money doing it, too. I would first like to thank our staff members for all of their hard work in making this trip possible and for taking care of these students as if they were their own. So first staff, will you raise your hands? And they're hiding, but. And then, of course, I want to thank our students. They just did such a great job, and if I asked them right now to go and introduce themselves, Mayor, do we have that time, just to let them, everyone know that they worked so hard to learn Japanese? I just want them to introduce themselves. Well, konnichiwa, well, quick introduction, okay? We'll start at the end. Don't be nervous, go. And that is just a small part of what they did. They learnt so many great things, but to our students, thank you for your help in furthering the beneficial relationship between the city of Lubbock and Musashino City, and for your passion to explore the world and new things. It is my honor to present this special proclamation, not to Megan, I think I might have gotten the wrong one. Well, I will provide each one to eat, let me see, not to Jeff Clark either, sorry. Let me get the correct ones, hold on one second. Got a feeling it is these. Here we go. Sorry, y'all. Thank you for your patience, and we had to learn patience, too, on this trip, didn't we? Here we go. We want to, once again, thank our junior ambassadors. We encourage all Lubbock citizens to applaud the Lubbock group and for their admirable accomplishments as young leaders, and to thank them for representing the city of Lubbock. And this is dated on this date, on behalf of the mayor and the city council. We thank you and we congratulate you, and arigato. Hi? I can't hear you, Mayor.
Y'all stick around, we'll hand, you wanna hand those out to them in the back? Well, that cleared out quickly when all that, right? Thank you, Chief. All right, one of, many of you are already know, but one of the very important jobs in the city is those that are appointed to our boards. Their, their time is invaluable to us and provides us with so much insight, and they make so many good, great decisions for us and help us so tremendously as a council. So at this time, I would like to present, well, I'm gonna have Brooke, who's right now our city manager this week, I'm gonna have her present this to you. As I call your name, if you please step forward, and Brooke's gonna hand you your certificate, and then we'll, we'll take a photo together. So first of all, we have Raymond Craig with Animal Service Advisory Board. Raymond here. Then we have Marciano Morales Junior with Capital Improvements Advisory Board. No, Marciano. We have Dr. Charity Embley. I know, I know Dr. Embley's here, come on up. She is with our Community Development and Services Board. Next, we have Chris King. Chris is with our Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee. Looking nice and pink today, Chris. Next, we have Hillary Watkins with Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee. Come on up, Hillary. We also have Shelby Cruz with Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee. Shelby. Next, we have Kathy Kitten. Kathy's with our Libraries Board. We also have James Jordan with Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board. And lastly, we have Keith Thompson with Parks and Rec. Come on up, Keith. Let's give them a round of applause.
Front and center, front and center. You know, I, ever since I've been on the council, I've created a Facebook page and some other social media spots, and one of the things that I, the posts that I often put on there is see something, say something. And Alice kind of brought that true to life. It was June first, two thousand twenty-three, and Alice was just working her normal route when she noticed an elderly man who seemed lost and in distress. And Alice, Alice's instincts told her something was not right, and she immediately contacted the proper authorities to assist the man, and it turned out that the elderly gentleman had recently been reported as missing. See something, say something. We can't do this alone. We can't love our elderly citizens alone. We can't, we can't love our middle-aged citizens alone, our babies, we have to do it together. So if you think of nothing else for the rest of the year, you think of what Ms. Alice did, see something, say something. As an operator at the city of Lubbock Solid Waste Department, as I stated, she found the elderly gentleman who had previously been reported as missing. And so on this day, and from this day forward, we'll remember what you did that you didn't have to do. And I find, along with my colleagues, that it is appropriate for us as citizens to stop and take time to thank Alice for what happened on June first, two thousand twenty-three, because it could have been any of our parents, husbands, or just any one of our loved ones. So I appreciate you, and I ask that all citizens take time to congratulate her and thank her for the work that she did, the hard work of care, and thank her for her passion as a tremendous public servant. It went further than any day before from that date. Thank you.
One thing I've been impressed with in my one year on the city council is the professionalism of our city staff and the people who work here at every level of our staff. And so it's my honor to acknowledge three different individuals, Nick Wilson, Joe Mouti, and Brian Bearden. If y'all are here, would you come forward? These three have completed the Certified Public Managers Program at Texas Tech University. This is City of Lubbock's Fire Rescue Deputy Chief, Nick Wilson, Emergency Management Director, Joe Mouti, and Public Works Water Utilities Maintenance Manager, Brian Bearden. And they've all recently completed the Certificate of Public Managers Program at Texas Tech. The program focuses on practical management skills that are unique to people who serve in the public sector, and by completing this program, these individuals have shown a certain unique depth of knowledge, experience, expertise, commitment to the professional management of the public assets and public services. So we're so proud of each one of you, and the city of Lubbock is fortunate to have you representative of the outstanding public servants that work together to make this such a wonderful community and make it even better. So it's my honor to present each of you with this special proclamation today from the city, and we encourage all citizens to join us in thanking these three men for their dedication and service to the city of Lubbock, and congratulate them on completing Texas Tech's Certified Public Manager Program, and wish them all continued success with the city of Lubbock.
Hopefully I got everything pronounced correctly there. Come on up, how are you? Commercial Plans Examiner, Jamie McGar recently earned the Certified Building Plans Examiner Certificate from the International Code Council. This certificate evaluates an individual's knowledge and proficiency in building codes and standards. It is appropriate to thank Jamie for his dedication to our community and for taking the time and effort to obtain his Building Plans Examiner Certificate to ensure the city of Lubbock remains safe and secure. Let's all congratulate Jamie on this.
Well, as you can see, the people who really do the work around here are the employees. We just sit in those chairs up there, and today, we're going to recognize the Department of Code Enforcement, Stuart Walker, and all your staff. Will you guys please come forward? He has a lot more staff than this. Get, get up here, Stuart. During the day, code enforcement is out telling people, or helping them in some cases, how they are violating the codes, what to do about it, and identifying codes violations. But you know, until you've actually seen what they do, you'd be really surprised, and I'll tell you why. I asked for one of my neighborhoods located between Erskine and the West Loop and between Slide Road and Frankford Avenue, for codes to come out and help. Now, we don't always say, good going, Stuart and staff, we say, go out there and get it done. Well, they came out that day, it's been about a month ago, and they got it going. So I went by that morning, I thought, I'm gonna see this operation. They set up out in the parking lot of The Message, which is a church in my neighborhood, and then they began to haul in roll-offs, I think we started with two, and then they started coming in with trailers full of items that people seemed to think belonged in the alley. And I will tell you, I was shocked, and I think, if they're not shocked, it's because they see it all the time. And then that afternoon, I went back by to see, and they had finished those two roll-offs, and I think brought, how many more, Stuart?
At least one.
At least one more. These are big. And about that time, two gentlemen in a pickup pulled in with a trailer that was loaded with mattresses. I had never seen so many mattresses in one place, not even in a store, and then in addition to having gone out and picked all of those up, they brought them in and one by one had to unload them into the roll-off. I know they get paid to do this job, I'm not sure we can pay anybody enough money to do that job, because some of those mattresses looked like they might have been there for a while. And so it's a problem in the city of Lubbock that some people seem to think that we're here to pick up after them. We do it, and they do it, they did it with a smile on their face, they were like, yes, this is what we do, and, you know, there's a lot out there, but that's not really the way this should work. Your tax dollars pay to go clean up somebody else's issue. We have so many places that you can drop off the large items, we have a phone number you can call if you just are unable to do that, and they will schedule a visit to, to help you. And so I don't think these guys get enough appreciation for what they do and the guys who are out in the trenches. I was very impressed, they go above and beyond. Now we're in weed season. We got rain, and so now we have weeds that are too tall, and what's the height?
Eight inches.
Eight inches. How many places have you seen there are a whole lot more than eight inches since the rain? So they're knocking on doors, they're trying to assist people, yes, they have to issue citations sometimes, but if people would just consider what they are doing to help all of us in the city and to make it a better place to live. So I'm very thankful, it was enlightening for me, I knew there were items in the alleys because I'd seen them, but I had no idea the degree that they existed. So we're going today to recognize the Department of Code Enforcement. So we're going today to recognize the Department of Code Enforcement and encourage all citizens to join in thanking them for their dedication and to applaud them for their hard work in what you all do, because it is really hard work.
Mayor, next time, I want to put the staff first, because they do work hard, and we need to put a face on what is often considered a faceless bureaucracy. They need to know that these employees work so hard for our citizens. So thank you all, every single one of you that is here today. This particular recognition is going to another employee, a fellow colleague, Alan Martin. He became the first Fire Marshal for the City of Lubbock to earn the International Code Council designation of Certified Fire Marshals. This certification demonstrates Alan's personal and professional commitment to public safety through an exhaustive knowledge of construction codes, self-initiative, and professional development. And you have been working hard lately, too, so thank you for that. Alan's knowledge and fire safety will enhance the services provided to citizens of Lubbock. It is my honor to present you with a certificate and thank you for your service to the city. And Alan Martin, we encourage all citizens to join us in thanking him for his dedication and service to the City of Lubbock. Congratulate Alan on completing International Codes Council Fire Marshal Certificate, certification that is, and wish him continued success at the City of Lubbock. And this is from the Mayor and your City Council. Thank you, Alan.
All right, it's my honor now to recognize the Texana Rodeo Participants. We've got, I know Brenda's coming up here. Brenda, Juan Rivera, Ernie Elias, Frank Oliveras, Gavin Almos, Jerry Dominguez, and Wood... And the infamous Wood Franklin. Vanna White. As everybody comes up here, the City of Lubbock Solid Waste Department recently hosted its annual Truck and Heavy Equipment Rodeo. Hey, the 2023 champions were Juan Rivera for Automated Side Loader Truck, Ernie Elias for Roll-Off Truck, Frank for Landfield Dozer, Gavin Almos for Landfield Rubber Tire Dozer, and Jerry Dominguez for Landfield Compactor. These contestants then competed in the 2023 Texas Lone Star Chapter of the Solid Waste Association of North America, Texana Annual Truck and Heavy Equipment Rodeo in Denton, Texas. The team from Lubbock represented the city and the community honorably and skillfully, placing in three categories. Juan placed second in the Automated Side Loader Truck, Gavin placed first in the Landfield Rubber Tire Loader, and Frank placed third in the Landfield Dozer. It is my honor to present these special recognitions to them for their achievements in the rodeo All right, cool. That's awesome. Hey, let's give it up for these guys.
Fellas, if you're a part of that six-member team, would you come forward now? You know, growing up, back in the 60s, I remember in Lubbock, with Lubbock and Amarillo, we would have that competition every time there was a census, who had the most people. You know, it was a fierce competition, even in between the census, between Amarillo and Lubbock, who was a better place to live. And I was always happy. I was really happy when Lubbock edged ahead of Amarillo at that time. But despite all that competition over the years, they're our sister city. And when they experienced the flooding that they had recently, and if you read about it, if you didn't go actually look at the video of what the impact that flooding had on Amarillo, it was absolutely devastating, unlike anything I've ever seen. So from June 11th to the 17th, these six brave City of Lubbock employees went to Amarillo, Texas to assist with the inspection of food facilities and vector control activities after Potter and Randall Counties experienced some extremely severe storms and flooding. This team consisted of five environmental health sanitarians and one vector control technician. Who's the vector control technician? The rest of you are the environmental health sanitarians. These individuals went above and beyond their line of duty to help the City of Amarillo, and we're fortunate to have such outstanding public servants on our team who are passionate about the safety and well-being of all. You know, that kind of concern doesn't stop at the city limit, so we really do appreciate you guys for extending our concern, and I dare say, our love for Amarillo by going up there and representing us up there. So it's my privilege to present this special recognition and to express our support and appreciation to everyone who traveled to Amarillo on such short notice and to the residents, to aid the residents of that city during a difficult time. We're thankful for these dedicated public servants and wish them to continued success and enjoyment in their profession. Thank you very much, fellas, very much.
I don't know about you guys, but that vector control is the most popular man in the city. Yes. If nobody tells you, thank you. I am going to call to the front Mitchell the Man Kingston. As he's coming. Mitchell Kingston is a first-year apprentice lineman at Lubbock Power and Light. Lubbock Power and Light hosted an in-house rodeo in March of 2023 as a part of the training program and as tryouts for the apprentice rodeo team. Well, with less than four months of experience on the crew, Mitchell earned a perfect score, earning the title LPNL Apprentice of the Year and Mitch the Man Kingston. It is appropriate to recognize Mitchell for his unwavering dedication to the profession as well as his ability to rise to whatever challenge comes before him. Mitchell currently embodies the spirit of excellence that is vital to maintaining a reliable and efficient electrical infrastructure. Say that four times fast. And it is my privilege to present this special recognition to Mitchell the Man Kingston.
All right. Joe, you guys, Joseph Wallace and other members. Are you by yourself? Is it just you? All right, come on up. This next award is going to be presented to the Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association. Joseph Wallace is here. He's the president of the association at this time. He says unfortunately. The Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association is an integral part of our community and promotes the safety and welfare of Lubbock citizens while representing Lubbock Fire Rescue to the highest degree. This group is known for their community outreach efforts, most recently providing and cooking meals, hamburgers and hot dogs for our city employee cookout and, you know, kind of at the last minute. Anytime that we need something, these guys step up at the last minute, they come out and they provide for us, they cook for us, and they're just always there at the last minute. And so we're grateful for that. So it's appropriate to thank the Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association for their continued generosity and sacrifice and for all they do to protect and serve Lubbock community, and it's my very great privilege to present them with this special recognition. We're very grateful to you guys very, very much. Thank you. And with that, that will conclude our ceremony today. Thank you all for showing up. Thanks for being here. I'd like to stick around. We have more cookies and some things to snack on, so thanks very much. We'll see you next time.